Okay, welcome to the Township Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of February 2nd, 2023. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all [?].
Please be aware this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice that the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the Township Clerk posted on the Township website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for Inspection, according to with the Open Public Meeting Notice. With that, may I have a roll call of Planning Board members and professionals?
Vice Chair Julian, Mr. Wagner, Kevin Chigarelli, and Mr. Delkor are currently absent. Mr. Hezen is also absent. Mr. Scobbo, here. Mr. Hashtag, here. Mr. Radowitz, here. Ms. Smith, here. Mayor Lepani, here. Chair Saraji, here. Coach, here. Mr. Hay, here. Sir Pidiar, here. And I'm here.
Good. Okay. So for this evening, we do not have consideration of meeting minutes nor resolutions. There is no Planning Board business, and we do not have considerations of ordinances. So we will go to business from the floor for matters not on the agenda this evening. And just to set up and reminder, some ground rules, about three minutes per person. And in addition, I know last year, we had a lot of commentary about warehouses in general. That will not be entertained for this because we have a number of applications, and we start to go down paths that are going to, you know, potentially cause conflict with these applications. So with that, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. And let the record reflect that Mr. Delkor is here at 7:07.
Let's have a podium. Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. Is it appropriate for someone with multiple applications before the Planning Board to advocate for those applications to the Township Committee? The answer is clearly no. But that's not the most interesting part of what took place last week. The most interesting part was the tremendous gap between representations made before the Township Committee and how this applicant has behaved regarding these applications. You can understand our skepticism when the applicant insists that he is, quote, "not a fighter," given his recent lawsuits against the Township in state and federal courts. Not a fighter? You had me fooled. He stated that he wants to be cooperative and a good partner with the town and its residents. Yet he refuses to allow neighbors directly impacted by his warehouse to participate in a site walkthrough. Neighbors are told that "you are not allowed on one foot on our property," and threatened by the applicant's attorney with a frivolous criminal complaint. The applicant needs clarification on what the word "cooperative" means. Finally, the applicant offered to make concessions, including operating hours of the facility, number of truck trips, et cetera. Unfortunately, no concessions are in his applications. In fact, none of the supersized warehouse applications before this committee contain any detail about operating hours, actual orientation...
Okay, we've gone down a path, I'm sorry. We're not going to talk about the warehouse applications.
Okay.
I understand that you're objecting to, we'll just say, a applicant that went before the Township Committee.
Great. And I'll skip that part. That's fine. I appreciate that. As for the lawsuit, if you want to be a good partner with the town, how about dropping the lawsuits? Instead, why not spend time and energy sitting down with the town planners, neighbors, and representatives from nearby towns to determine suitable locations for certain things that you're applying for? Don't claim to be our partner, then take us to court, resulting in tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer dollars. You, as the Planning Board, have a difficult job. You have to assess not only the suitability of the proposed development, but consider its impact on the community and neighborhood. I don't envy you in this job. I will say that it is not just about meeting a specific set of requirements. It is also a judgment about whether the applicant will be a good addition to the neighborhood. These developments will forever change the fabric of our town and impact all residents, not just those who live near one of them. Will they be good neighbors? Will they care about responding to concerns from the community about ameliorating their impact? Do they behave like good neighbors during the application process? Or are they bullies with the public, impatient, aggressive, and stubborn? Are they making verbal claims that they have a variance-free application, but their actual application requires many variances and waivers? There's only one thing worse than being a bully. It is being a bully and pretending to be a nice guy. I sincerely hope and respectfully ask that the Board consider these factors as you weigh these developments. We stand ready to be cooperative and neighborly. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to take a moment to comment on what happened at the Township Committee meeting with regards to any applicant that attempts to reach out to maybe some Planning Board members. No different than, I know in the past, we probably have all received correspondences about certain applications. I can tell you that those things, once we know what the nature or content of that, they get filed under S for shred. They're inadmissible. If someone is attempting to do any type of, they need to present it here to put it on the record so it can be appropriately cross-examined. So I can assure the public that whatever was said was a waste of a person's breath and is not going to be considered. Anyone else want to come up? I'm done.
Maria, January 6th, 7:20 East Freck Avenue, Mandeville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. At a prior meeting, I had asked if there were going to be verbatim transcripts provided regarding prior public hearings for applications. And I was told that there would be, but looking on the website, they're not available. So is there a reason why verbatim transcripts are not being provided?
Mr. Coys?
I thought we said when they were, if they were available, they would be done, not...
If so, well then, so then the question is, when? Or is it always going to be if they're available and they won't be available? Because the applications have been several months ago, so it shouldn't be an issue of time.
If I may, there are transcripts that are going to be included. We're just making sure all of our affairs are in order. Currently, they are not posted, but they will be as we consult our attorney and make sure we're doing the right thing in terms of the transcripts being ready. But it is something that we're looking at. But as of right now, I did verify that they're currently not available to the public. But that is something that we're looking at.
Okay, so you have a public hearing. You have a lot of people present. A lot of people who weren't here at prior meetings have no idea what went on. And I think it's very, very important that these verbatim transcripts be made available for the meetings. Thank you.
Yeah. Just a reminder for everyone, all these meetings are videoed and they are available. So while you may not have a transcript, you have the videos available online to view I said, I'm sorry, if you couldn't hear me, I said, even though there are not transcripts available, every one of these meetings is available on video on the Township website. So you can, anyone that wants to understand what happened at the meeting can go, the videos are available.
I do have one question. Susan Gallowford on Club Road. At the January 12th Planning Board meeting, 303 M. W. was given 20 days to decide how they wanted the application handled because it was a jurisdictional problem. I wondered if that application had been switched over to Board of Adjustment, or if it was still at Planning Board?
It's currently still before the Board, and they have not filed an appeal relative to the zoning officer's decision. So depending on what ultimately happens, that still hasn't yet to be determined.
Okay, I just thought the 20 days was up.
And the 20 days has come and gone, and they've chosen, so. But the Board has taken no action to transfer the application.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, the January 21st, 24th Township Committee meeting, yeah, I thought it was really inappropriate that we had an applicant who tried to sway the Board and made an almost seven-minute speech promoting his applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, going to move on to this evening's application. Weston RD LLC, file number 22-PV-03-MSPV, with the time of decision of June 30th of this year. It's Block 185, Lot 1, Weston Road. The applicant seeking a preliminary and final major site plan approval. See bulk variances and waivers to construct 135,000-square-foot warehouse building with stormwater parking associated improvements on the property located in the light industrial district. The Environmental Commission has reviewed this on October 24th of last year. And the last appearance of this applicant was at the January 12th, 2023 Plan Board Meeting. There was no testimony. They're here for scheduling only. This application is being continued from that meeting. And again, it was for scheduling purposes only, but it is continued with notice.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant was also here on November 10th for the original hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Mike O'Grady. I'm an attorney at Savo Shawk Law Firm in Somerville. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Weston Road LLC. As we indicated in our prior hearing on November 11th, this application seeks preliminary and final major site plan with bulk variance and waiver approval needed for the construction of a 140,155-square-foot industrial warehouse building, which includes 5,300 square feet of office. Frontage is on Weston Road. The subject property is Block 185, Lot 1. It's in the I-1 Light Industrial Zone. The property is approximately 18.2 acres in size. That's generally a wooded lot. This applicant seeks to improve the property with one industrial warehouse building with the accessory office. Proposed uses are permitted principal uses in the zone. Site is located on the south side of Weston Road, across from a chained-off terminus of Waterman Lane. The site is currently undeveloped, characterized as mostly upland forest, small pockets of upland scrub and forested wetlands. The northernmost forested wetland pocket is associated with a stream feature, which runs in a northwesterly direction. Site is bordered to the north by Weston Road with a residential development beyond, to the east by Conrail, Delaware, and Bound Brook Railroad right-of-way, and some commercial development with a small privately-owned airport beyond. To the south, by a closed municipal landfill and some unimproved forested residential property, and to the west by a residential development. Site is located within the Millstone River watershed and Warratt River drainage basin. Additional proposed development includes utility, access drive, parking, loading areas, walkways, trash dumpster, stormwater detention basin. For utilities, water, sanitary sewer, gas, electric utilities, communications will tie into the existing lines along Weston Road. The applicant's use is consistent with the warehouse industrial facilities near this property, which include 284 Sunny Mead, which is General Tool, which is an industrial warehousing building, 113 Weston, Mindstone Construction, 101 Weston Road, industrial warehouse building, generally on Kennedy Boulevard north of Weston Road, which has numerous commercial parcels adjacent to the rail line. It's important for the Board and for the record and for the public to understand the history of this property. This property was approved by the Planning Board on October 4th, 1990, for 13 industrial warehouse lots. Property has been zoned industrial for 40-plus years. Warehousing and office have always remained permitted principal uses in the I-1, I-2, and I-3 zones. Section 188-106 provides that in these light industrial districts, the purpose is to create zoning districts recognizing the existing pattern of small industrial-oriented facilities, allowing the remaining vacant lots in the same area to be developed with similar uses and providing areas for modest industrial operations. The proposed use of this property is entirely consistent with the stated purposes and permitted uses as defined in the light industrial district, as confirmed by the Planner's Report dated November 10th, 2022, which states that, open quote, "warehousing, shipping, and receiving completely within enclosed building and offices are permitted uses," close quote, citing Section 188-106B2 and 188-106B1 of the zoning district. As we had gone through in the prior meeting, and I think it's important for new members that were not at the prior hearing, the subject property was originally owned by Hillsborough Township. It was sold in an auction at 1969 to be developed. Since March 1970, this property has been owned by the Quistella family. And on October 4th, 1990, the Hillsborough Planning Board granted preliminary and major subdivision of property, which approval was memorialized by resolution dated October 29th, 1990. That resolution is part of the record on Civic Clerk. Pursuant to the terms of that approval, the owner was granted, as I stated, the industrial lot subdivision for warehousing and office uses, and those approvals were extended by the Planning Board. And on January 6th, 2000, the Planning Board adopted a resolution confirming that the period of approval has been told, and it's still in effect. There's been no changes to the zone that would impact the existing approvals. In order to satisfy certain requirements, soil testing on the property was performed by the owner's agents at the direction of the township on or about July 24th, 1998. The testing was conducted all over the property and specifically in the southwest area of the property. The testing, together with a review of historic records, revealed the presence of a landfill previously owned and operated by Hillsborough on the property in the early 1960s, which was not disclosed as part of the auction. The owner filed a notice of tort claim against Hillsborough alleging amongst other causes of action fraud, fraudulent concealment, negligent landfill operations, nuisance, et cetera, relating to the failure of Hillsborough to disclose to the buyer that the property was used as a municipal landfill and was contaminated. In addition, allegations related to that complaint include failure to properly close the landfill under the Sanitary Landfill Facility Closure and Contingency Fund Act, NJSA 13:1E-100, the New Jersey Spell Compensation and Control Act, NJSA 58:10-23.11, et cetera, and the Federal Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act of 1982, 42 U.S.C. 9601, et cetera. The case was ultimately settled for the Industrial Warehouse Project approval that I had previously mentioned, and the Township taking back ownership of the landfill property on the rear of the lot nearest to the train tracks where the landfill was most concentrated and operated. As I mentioned, the industrial project approvals were extended various times in the last 20 years. There's emphasis that this property currently has the same approvals for the warehouse use, which has approved many years before the Hearthstone Over 55 Community lawsuit and construction. At the time of the Hearthstone application, then-planner Bob Ringelheim identified and affirmed the permitted industrial warehouse uses at the applicant's property across the street from Hearthstone. Ringelheim also advised of the six-acre portion of the Hearthstone project in the airport safety zone would permit industrial uses, but it would need a new site plan for any proposed uses. In fact, the builder, representing what ultimately became Hearthstone, filed a lawsuit against Hillsborough Township under the Mount Laurel litigation, Round 2, because the Township had fallen behind on their legal obligation to provide for coing housing and had lost certification, opening themselves up to builders remedy lawsuits, and this was one of those lawsuits. That provided for rezoning and construction of 185 units. The residential project adjacent to the approved warehouse project across the street was well after the approvals for the warehouse use. Residents of Hearthstone could have discovered with due diligence, with minor due diligence, that they were across the street when they purchased their property, across from an industrial zone, A, and that there was an approved warehouse use for that property. The 55-plus community across the street developed in the late 2000s. Memorandum and resolutions approved, supported, and codified their industrial use. The industrial uses were in the master plan since, as my research indicates, at least 1982. And notably, for purposes of this application, the building is nearly three times further setback from the front property line than is required by the zone, and is buffered by a large pond detention basin fronting the adjacent Hearthstone community. This application in the light industrial zone complies with all bulk requirements. One acre is required, we're at 18.2 acres. Lot depth, 200 feet, we're at 791.9 feet. Compliant with front yard, side yard, rear yard. Lot setback, impervious. The zone permits 60%, we're at 49.4%. Buffer area, all compliant. This application does seek a variance, a sea bulk variance for max building height, where 35 feet is required, and 38.4 feet is proposed. Should also be noticed that the Township redefined what constitutes building height during the pendency of this application, despite the project being designed in reliance upon Mr. Maskey's email and my understanding as the historic interpretation of building height. So the project is currently being completely redesigned. We have our architect and our engineer, Mike Ford, working on a revised site plan that looks to keep the height under the 38.4 feet, which again is just a sea bulk variance, not a D6 height variance. And we will be providing the Board with the updated and revised site plan and architectural renderings when they get completed. There are waivers necessitated, design waivers. Some of these are going to be eliminated, but I'm going to go through the full list that was enumerated in the initial planning review memorandum. One, buffer required from the property line to the loading or parking with 10 or more spaces. 16 feet is proposed, or 30 feet is required, and proposed tractor-trailer parking within the same required buffer. I note that the adjacent property is in an industrial use. Parking spaces 10 by 18 or 10 by 20 is required, 18860A. Tractor-trailer parking spaces 10 by 60, 18860A. Isle width, 24 foot proposed, 30 foot required, 18860A. Signage, a waiver is requested for the proposed wall signs. One, labeling as building identification signage on the north elevation, and two, labeled as building identification signage and building mounted signage on the west elevation where one is permitted, and contrary to Section 18885K3. There's also a sign waiver for the wall sign that exceeds 40 square feet under 18885K3. For tree mitigation, we're applying the economic hardship waiver. The replanning requirement reduced to the 1.5% of the total site improvements for the development under 188164E. As we indicated last morning, we've identified a tenant for this property. We have a hotter reef here. He's the owner of Miracle Brands. Miracle Brands is a linen company. They import mainly towels and sheets from the Middle East, from India and Pakistan. And then the intent is to warehouse the linens and sheets, and their business is primarily online-based. We also have Jim Scott here. He's our warehouse consultant. I'm not going to introduce him as a witness, but I will make him available to the Board to ask any general questions about warehouse operations. He's handled many, many warehouses, and I wanted to bring him tonight if there's any follow-up questions that maybe the tenant can't answer with respect to anticipated operations. Mike Ford of Van Cleef Engineering, he's our professional engineer. Unfortunately, I spoke with him this morning, and he's come down with the flu. He's unable to proceed tonight, but I will say he's not done the revised site plan. The revised site plan addresses comments made from Mr. Hay and other Board professionals, as well as comments from the public and the Board. Generally, those comments include a redesign and an increase in capacity in the wet basin. Mr. Ford has proposed a pond-type wet basin structure for the front yard with a fountain, and we are going to be making changes to that in addition to changes related to the grading because of the new interpretation of the building height. Same thing with the architect. We are endeavoring to comply with, well, we must comply with the height variance, or we would be before the Board of Adjustment. So we're making adjustments to the site plan based upon the most recent interpretation of building height, how building height is measured, which is apparently on all elevations. And historically, it was only measured from the street elevation, or if it fronted two streets, from an average of the two-street elevations. I've looked at dozens, if not hundreds, of applications, and it's my testimony, it's my information that historically the...
For purposes of the record, I'd like the notation that Mr. O'Grady cannot testify in this hearing. He is not a sworn witness. If he wishes to become a sworn witness, we can arrange for that at a separate time and a separate place, but the fact of the matter is you don't give testimony. And I'd like the record to reflect the use of testimony is improperly applied for purposes of the record.
My experience with the Board is that the historic interpretation of height was consistent with Mr. Maskey's email, which we had also attached as part of the applicant's documents. We have Steve Randoski. He's our architect of Perez and Randoski. He will provide architectural design testimony with respect to the project and the signage. We have Gary Dean of Dolan and Dean Engineering as our professional traffic engineer. He'll provide traffic testimony. We've just retained an additional expert, and I do have signed and sealed copies from Mr. Coys of Jake Zabura of Bodnar Engineering. He did an air quality impact analysis, and we just got the report, so we're going to save that for the next hearing that's slated for May. And then we also have Kenyon Hughes. He's our professional planner of Philip Priest, and he will discuss the justifications for that D6, or I'm sorry, for that sea bulk height variance, as well as the waiver.
Sorry, Mr. O'Grady, I just want to... Do we have the Planner's Report? Did it arrive ten days before tonight?
I don't believe we have.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that, folks.
I don't believe we currently have the Planner's Report. Was it submitted?
Yes.
Okay.
But he's not here anyway, so he has a conflict tonight. So as usual, we'll wrap up with planning at the end. The intent tonight is to get through, as we said last time, is to get through operations testimony from the intended tenant, who is going to describe his business and his operations. Again, we also have Jim Scott, again, available to answer operational questions. He's an expert in the area of warehouse construction. He's a consultant. And then we'll move on to Mr. Dean's traffic testimony. He's a consultant, and then we'll move on to Mr. Dean's traffic testimony. So that's, unless there's any comments from Mr. Ash?
Well, do we formally introduce, because you weren't here last night?
Before we formally introduce Mr. Ash, let me put a couple of items on the record. Let the record reflect that at 7:26, Mr. Peace had arrived. For purposes of tonight's hearing, I will indicate that I have a certification of absent board member, examination of record from Mr. Hestag, Mr. Rattowitz, Mr. Scobo, and Mr. Wagner, who's not here this evening, so they are, the first three are eligible to participate. Mr. Ash is here, let him introduce himself for purposes of the record, and I will have something to say when he's concluded at least his introduction.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
You have the talk up, Jordan. I'm accused of the same thing.
Is the light on?
Oh.
There's the light.
Is this my, being heard? Okay, so, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Hay, Mr. Coys, Chairman Soraki, and members of the board. As some of you know, my name is Jordan Ash. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Riker Danzig in Morristown. I have appeared before this board previously, and it's a privilege to be back here again. Tonight, I'm here representing the Hearthstone at Hillsborough Homeowners Association and its objection to the plan proposed for approval, the plan for development of a warehouse on Weston Road at Block 185, Lot 1. My client, the Hearthstone Homeowners Association, is a 55-plus age-restricted community that exists immediately adjacent across the street to the property on which the site plan is proposed, with only the quiet country road of Weston Road situated between. Hearthstone was approved for construction circa 2005 in connection with the fair share development application. However, as I understand it, Hearthstone's 185 units are all market rate as the fair share component of this development was created offsite. The residents of Hearthstone have come to Hillsborough over the years for the quiet community, the general safety of the surroundings, the lack of traffic congestion, for Hillsborough's prime location near work and family for many. In other words, they were attracted by Hillsborough's country-esque qualities, many of which are directly threatened by this application. They do not wish to or are unable to relocate for any reason, and especially not for surrounding irresponsible development that can and should be prevented. To support its opposition to this irresponsible, non-permitted, hazardous, and non-compliant development proposal, Hearthstone will present lay testimony from one or more of its members, and expert testimony from a stormwater engineer and from a professional planner. Hearthstone does reserve its right to present additional testimony as may be appropriate and to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. The applicant has referenced the I-1 zone that it has existed since before the construction of the Hearthstone community. This is true. It has. However, this has no bearing on my client's right to be heard in opposition to this proposed site plan, and it has no bearing on the applicant's burden of proof in supporting its proposal for this proposed site plan. The applicant has additionally referenced various prior settlement agreements, approvals, and resolutions by the township and by this board. Similarly, these agreements and approvals have no bearing on the applicant's burden of proof to support the currently proposed site plan. In fact, the applicant's proposal is substantially different from anything that was previously agreed to or approved. And to the extent those prior agreements and approvals apply at all, they have restrictions and conditions in them that would prevent this development in significant ways, specifically in terms of permitted stormwater runoff and building height. Though the applicant purports to propose a permitted-use development in the I-1 zone, and the zone is meant for small industrial-oriented facilities with modest industrial operations, other exemplary permitted uses in the zones are office buildings, facilities for assembly within an enclosed building, research facilities, and medical and veterinary hospitals. Even the permitted use of warehousing is conditioned upon that shipping and receiving is conducted completely within a enclosed building, with building being defined as, among other things, having a roof. The scope of this proposal is well beyond the I-1 zone standard, and this is evidenced by the proposed building capacity, the parking lot layout, the sheer number of parking spaces, 139, parking spaces for tractor-trailers, 28, and loading docks, 20. For those reasons, and with all due respect to the capabilities of the members and professionals of this board, this board does lack jurisdiction to hear this application. The use is not within the scope of the permitted use under applicable ordinance, and additionally, this board lacks jurisdiction because the applicant continues to propose a building height that is more than 10% greater than the permitted 35 feet, and so a D or a use variance from the Board of Adjustment is needed. To support its position that it is not proposing a building height of above 38.4 feet, the applicant relies on an email for its position that is taken out of context from another application, and it claims it's completely redesigning the site plan, completely redesigning the site plan, yet we've not seen it. So we shouldn't proceed, because this board currently does not have jurisdiction of the application, and this is the second hearing now, and they, we already had one hearing with this board not having jurisdiction, under the assumption that the plans would be revised, and they've not been revised as of yet. Also, the prior site plan, it should be noted, was designed prior to the end user was known, so the site plan may be changed significantly beyond even what is expected. Nevertheless, even if this application were properly before the planning board, which it is not, the applicant has not and cannot adequately justify the variances and waivers that it requires. This board need not accept the applicant's bare inconclusory statements that the benefits of the application substantially outweigh the detriment, and testimony will be provided to the contrary, which is that the significant detriment outweighs any purported benefit stemming from this application. Additionally, this application fails to meet stormwater management standards. It improperly approaches upon a Hillsborough stream corridor. It improperly relies on a wetlands letter of interpretation and a flood hazard area verification that were issued to other parties for other purposes. It will add a volume of more than 500,000 gallons of stormwater runoff to the Hearthstone property despite having not analyzed the impacts of doing so, or even whether it has the right to do so in the first place. Additionally, the application runs afoul of Hillsborough's tree mitigation ordinance. It does not provide any legitimate air quality and no noise analysis whatsoever, and does not account for the airport hazard zone in which it is located. For these reasons, this board should deny the application if it gets the opportunity to make determination one way or the other. However, for the reasons I previously stated, Hearthstone submits now that this board lacks jurisdiction to hear and to approve or deny this application, so this hearing should immediately cease that the application may properly be presented to the Board of Adjustment. And I think we're going to get to the other things to talk about when Mr. Bernstein jumps in, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernstein or Mr. Coys?
Well, let's-
Do we want to talk about jurisdiction before we-
Well, before we even get to jurisdiction, let's talk about, I won't say standing, but argument. Mr. Ash and I went back and forth today, so for the purposes of the record, Mr. Ash is representing the entire Hearthstone and Hillsborough Association and all the members and residents of the development. Therefore, he is here on their behalf. Members, people who do not live in the development are not represented by him and therefore have the right to cross-examine witnesses and do publicly speak at the appropriate times. However, residents of the development, other than those he potentially intends to call, will be not authorized to come before the board. They are going through the authorization of Mr. Ash at Part 1. Part 2, there is a question raised, well, let's go back. If the board may recall for those board members who were either here or reviewed the testimony of the November 10 meeting. Mr. O'Grady was instructed to basically go back and redo, or his client was basically instructed to go back if they wanted to go forward, and redo the application, which is, he has indicated to you tonight, has not yet occurred. If the board may also recall, Mr. Ford had completed his testimony based on what was before the board at the time, as well as cross-examination from the members of the board, however, we had not gotten the public comment, which in this case would put Mr. Ash at the front of the line, so to speak, in his capacity now as objector. Additionally, Mr. O'Grady referenced toward the end of the application, the possibility of a tenant, which, as far as I'm aware, with the exception of the announcement in the Courier News article today, the board has seen no material relative to same, though he was instructed at the time in November that if he had a tenant, that he was to provide the information well in advance of the next board hearing, so the board would have the opportunity to review it and address it, put it up on Civic Clerk, et cetera. That has also not occurred. I have received communication from the objector, and I suggested that the appropriate place to have it after about two emails, and I had enough of the two emails, was to do it before this board, was whether or not this app was separate apart from the jurisdictional issue, which frankly is sort of new on this today, that the issue of whether or not this matter should go forward because Mr. Ford is not here and therefore not eligible to do this in an orderly fashion is an issue the board needs to address, as to whether you want to hear this application in a, what I would potentially refer to as a disjointed matter, because at some point, one way or another, Mr. Ford has to come back, whether it's this plan or another, and give additional testimony. So, and the public still is entitled to its right, as well as Mr. Ash, to cross-examine at least the current plan that's before this board. In the absence of another plan, the plan before the board is the plan that was submitted in conjunction with the original hearing before this board in November. So I would suggest, separate and apart from the jurisdiction issue, which I'm not totally sure, my office nor Mr. Coys has been provided with information relative to same, except this evening. I would like if applicants wish to be, councils wish to be heard on the issue of continuing the application based on the absence of the last witness being here.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. So, you know, I would say that in general, witnesses often, you know, do not finish their testimony, and I think in the interest of judicial economy, it makes no sense to cross-examine Mike Ford on a plan that's going to change. Now, again, it bears emphasis that one of the primary reasons for the change, in addition to the comments, was some substantial changes to the site plan based upon the interpretation of the building height. We were just advised at REORG that this application would be first, and we did not, we had four days to get our revised plans in, and that wasn't possible. We've met several times with the applicant and our professionals to discuss some of the revisions that we think are appropriate for the site plan. I will quote, I agree 100% that the public and the objectors' council has a constitutional right to cross-examination based on due process, and I'm going to quote Lincoln Heights v. Crankford Planning Board, 314 NJ SUPER 366, Law Division 1988. In that case, there was a traffic expert that testified on two occasions as to the anticipated effect of a proposed use on neighborhood traffic. On the first two days of the hearing, he was not only subject to extensive cross-examination by the public, but also by the board. On the third and last hearing day, the expert was not available, and a member of the public expressed dismay at being unable to cross-examine him. The court ultimately commented that upon the public's opportunity to cross-examine the witness during the first two days of the hearing, and given the extensive testimony received by the board regarding traffic and other concerns, noted, quote, open quote, "It cannot reasonably be said that interested parties were deprived of their right to cross-examine their witness," quote, quote. Court found that the witness's unavailability on the third day of hearings did not significantly impair the public's ability to determine his credibility or test the merits of his conclusions. Similarly, in this case, there's certainly no question that the public and the objector will have extensive opportunity to cross-examine Mike Ford on his revised site plan. So there's no concern for any constitutional due process violations, and, Mr. Chairman, you could certainly, you know, dictate the parameters of that cross-examination. But unfortunately, Mike Ford was sick tonight. He's unfortunately has the flu again, and I spoke with him this morning for the first time. I was unaware that he was not feeling well, and again, since he is redesigning the site plan, it certainly doesn't make sense, in my view, to cross-examine him on a plan that's not going to be the final plan. Jurisdictionally, we're going to comply with the height variance. We're not going to need a D6 height variance, and when a board, on one hand, says we're reinterpreting how we measure height, I don't think they can, on the other hand, then say, "Oh, and by the way, you don't have your time, you don't have your plans in on time, and therefore this board lacks jurisdiction." I think that would be, that would run afoul with fundamental principles of fairness. So again, we want to advance the ball and continuing on with our testimony. We have our operational testimony from Miracle Brands. We'd like to proceed with, you know, about a half an hour testimony from Ahad, who's going to explain the history of the business and his anticipated operations. And we'd also like to get through traffic. Mr. Dean from Dolan &amp; Dean has submitted a traffic impact analysis on Civic Clerk, and we'd like to, you know, continue to keep this application moving. One thing that's happening that's never happened here is the length of time that these applications are taking and the multiple hearings. I can't remember more than two or three hearings for any application, including thousands of units of residential. But, you know, and of course, the MLUL, you know, requires an agency action within 120 days. Many of these applications are well beyond a year since they've been deemed complete, and we continue to consent to extending time for the board to act, but I do not see any substantial or, you know, good reason for continued delay of these applications any further. So we would like to proceed with our application and, you know, bring up, at least get through with a couple of witnesses tonight.
If I may. So, a big point of what's going on with Mr. Ford, a big problem, is that he's mid-testimony. He's currently testifying, and obviously, he was scheduled for cross-examination at the start of this hearing. It's not only unusual for testimony to be interspliced in this way. It's inconsistent with the mandate of the MLUL that requires the opportunity for cross-examination of witnesses, and intersplicing additional direct testimony from witnesses that may rely on Mr. Ford's testimony, despite that he has not yet been cross-examined, is not only unorderly, it's unfair. It's both the board's and the applicant's duty to provide an orderly manner of hearing of evidence of testimony. And of note, it is also unfair to Hearthstone in this circumstances, where Mr. Ford's illness was, we were given notice of it only a few hours before this hearing, and up until a few hours ago, our presentation was being prepared to begin with Mr. Ford.
Excuse me, can you just make sure you speak into the mic, please?
Sure. So, and on that same note, the fact that, you know, part of what the applicant is saying is that Mr. Ford couldn't testify anyway because the site plan is not done, how is any witness going to give testimony on a site plan that's not done? The site plan affects all aspects of this application, the traffic, the use, the planning, all of it. If the site plan's not done, we can't properly cross-examine the intent and the purpose of the site plan and its impact on these other witnesses and what they're testifying The Lincoln Heights case that was cited here, even in Mr. O'Grady's brief description there, that case is way different. That witness there was cross-examined for two days, and then just wasn't available to be presented for a third day. There was no out-of-order testimony. There was no missing site plan. There was no additional witnesses to rely on that witness's testimony. So that case, to me, seems inapplicable. So if we're going to talk about the fundamental principles of fairness, to allow this application to continue tonight with the testifying witness being unavailable mid-testimony and a site plan that doesn't exist yet, that inhibits on the fundamental principles of fairness as to the objector and to the- as to the objector and to the public.
I would just say that if you could cite to a single case or statute that prohibits interspliced testimony.
I'd cite it to the MLUL requiring an orderly proceeding, and I also explained how your case was inapplicable, so I don't fully understand what you're getting at.
Where in the MLUL does it prohibit this?
I don't have the exact cite.
Okay.
All right. That's enough of the volleys going back and forth. Mr. Coys, in your opinion, is this the appropriate location for, to hear this application?
I have, hello? Okay. Thank you. I have some concerns, as I had indicated previously. When I wrote my report in terms of the height, I had requested that additional information is provided from the architect so that we can make a determination in terms of jurisdiction for the planning board. I also had concerns in terms of the operations of the use, details that are required through our ordinance, in terms of the operations of the site, ships, employees, et cetera. It is my opinion that right now, in terms of the testimony that's been provided, in my opinion, it would be, it's disjointed, and to not have this additional information, it's not all matching up. And so my recommendation is that we would be able to see a site plan, and we would have all this other additional information ahead of time so that we can be prepared and have opinions and cross-examine.
Thank you, David. First of all, when we set the date at Reorg, you agreed to the date. If there was an issue with you concerning not having the application ready for us in time, I think that would have been the time to bring that up and possibly swap another application out. I don't want to get into a situation where we are taking testimony on things that are going to change, as Mr. Coys said. We don't have full understanding of it. It's not fair to the public who are here and now that have a representative that they don't have full information prior to the application. As far as your tenant, I think we had talked about having something more tangible as to proof of who that tenant was going to be, not just testimony. I think that was part of the ask we had in November, which we have not seen. Then we have a, you know, planner's report or a traffic report here that may or may not have considered the new tenant, don't know, but that would be something that should be presented. So my point is that, in all due respect, I don't believe that it is the right time to proceed with this, though I would love to proceed because we're all here, and we're all giving up a night to be here, and as well as the public. But I think that the application is not prepared properly to proceed, in my opinion.
Any other members?
Mr. Hag.
Oh, I didn't see you have the mic.
No, Mr. Chairman, if you can hear me. Yeah, I did have a discussion with Mr. Coys about this earlier, and yeah, it's very uncommon to have an application where you don't have a revised plan that you can review, as well as revised architectures, and then to be able to go ahead and decipher potential changes to a traffic report. We do have changes that were made to traffic report, however, I'm not clear of whether or not the changes that are being made from an elevation perspective are going to affect the layout and also affect the parking, as well as circulation, that a traffic engineer should look at anyhow. So there may be further revisions with the traffic testimony as well, and I do agree with Mr. Coys, it would probably be best that we do receive a revised plan and that we are able to comment on prior to another hearing.
Any other members of the board?
I guess, I'd just like to, if Mr. Ford was not ill, what would he have been talking about? The old plan or the new plan?
He was requested by the chairman at the end of the hearing to remain as a witness to be cross-examined at that time from the public before Mr. Ash. So that was the request, that it was open to cross-examination because we ran out of time.
Right, but that presumed, I think, that the site plan, if it was going to be amended, would be available to be reviewed. If it wasn't going to be amended, then he would be talking about the old plan. I guess I'm struggling to understand what he would have actually talked about if the revised site plan wasn't ready. Why would we, why would we want him to testify on the old plan?
And that was the request of the chairman, that he remain a witness subject to cross-examination. I agree with you.
I don't disagree, we want him to be another witness. The question is on what?
The issue is, there is no new plan.
I, as of now, yes.
Right now, there is a plan, and the chair asked that Mr. Ford be made available for cross-examination based on his testimony at the November 10th meeting. So if he were here tonight, he'd be required to undergo examination based on what is before this board. If there turns out to be a new plan, he'll be back again for another round of direct cross-examination by Mr. Ash, examination by the public, et cetera. The issue now is whether it's an old plan, a new plan, or somewhere in between, there's no Mr. Ford. So therefore, we are basically at a disjointed point, on top of the fact that we also asked Mr. O'Grady when he mentioned toward the end of the last hearing that his client had a tenant, we wanted all the information regarding a tenant. We have not received that information. The only way we're aware is a very lovely article in the Courier News today from Mr. Deek indicating the application. Otherwise, this board has, the planning department has no material, my office has nothing, and the planning board has seen nothing. So what you're going to get, or being proposed to get, is a testimony from an individual who has nothing before this board, and which we are going to, the professionals, the board, the public, et cetera, are going to be engaged in catch-ups while we try to figure out what we can glean out of the testimony, and then try to figure out what else we need after we've gleaned our way through the testimony to get to the point where we should be in the first place. Mr. O'Grady's comment about these things have dragged on forever, he's correct, but there are also six applications, his office representing all six. The decision made on how they were to be done was made by his clients, and as the mayor indicated, if tonight was not acceptable to Western Road, he's ostensibly controlling the calendar on behalf of his client from now till June. So it's up to the board, but frankly, this case is going to go on, whether we solve the problem tonight or not, because I would suspect at best, if the board allows the testimony of Mr. O'Grady's client's tenant, everybody on this side of the room is going to want additional information to review for purposes of giving advice, most notably Mr. Hag, Mr. Coys, and myself, none of which we're going to have here tonight, except testimony, which I can't recommend to this client be engaged in cross-examination when you've got nothing to cross-examine except verbal representations. And it's not a surprise, since we all know, that the position of the township on what I would call spec warehousing, it's one of the pieces of the litigation that we're currently engaged in on another application, was that issue. And that's why I assume the Gestellas are bringing forth a potential tenant because there's an issue of spec warehousing. So get us the material anywhere between November the 10th and two weeks ago. Ultimately, it's up to the board what they want to do. As for the jurisdiction issue, I haven't seen, obviously, Mr. Ash is new, I haven't seen anything from Mr. Ash on the subject of whether or not this board has jurisdiction under a D6 variant, 4055, D70, D6, but there's nothing before the board at this point either regarding that as well, unlike a previous application in which the jurisdiction wasn't raised as an issue by the townships in-house planning and zoning officers. So it's ultimately up to this board, but frankly, we're going to go back around again on the same thing at some point in time in the next few weeks. And contrary to public belief, and the public is, we don't control how these, we control how these are presented, but we don't control how the material is brought to the attention of the board and its professionals relative to how it's to be presented. So therefore, when you don't give us things in advance, we all can't give the board an opinion, the objector and the public can't have their say, and we end up coming back at this again anyway. I'm not suggesting that even if they had all the information, we wouldn't be coming back at this again, another point, but it only makes it harder.
Okay. I mean, I was initially inclined, under conditions, because we knew, because there wasn't anything presented to us in advance, that anyone given testimony tonight would have to come back in May for cross-examination at minimum, so. And granted, I agree with Mr. Bernstein, we, with regard to the jurisdiction, or claim, but challenge, I mean, we need something. You know, Mr. Coys, initially, I know that you want some additional information to render your opinion, but, you know, but we did schedule this, you know, or did get scheduled before the planning board, but without additional information. I don't think we can consider changing the jurisdiction at this point.
I appreciate that for the use part of it. I have not had time to submit anything on that, although the current site plan that's before the board, as far as the height variance goes, I know it's been told we're going to see something else, but we've not, and so the current site plan is a jurisdictional issue because this board doesn't have jurisdiction to grant a variance above 38.4 feet, which we've determined that's the height of the current plan.
Mr. Chairman, for purport of the record, there is no request for a variance that we put it outside the jurisdiction, and ultimately, if the current plan remains in its current condition and that becomes an issue down the road, it may be a rationale for the board to deny the application because it exceeds the jurisdiction of the board, but at the moment, there's no request for it, and there's no testimony necessarily as to whether or not, and I'm assuming that would be one of the things that Mr. Ash intended to raise on a question with Mr. Ford if he were here tonight to ask the questions, because it's his testimony relative to the engineering. So leaving that issue aside for the moment, we have the broader issues here.
All right. Any other planning board members want to chime in? Just entertaining, I know the mayor's giving his opinion. Anyone else?
Would you need a formal motion to do that? What is the?
A formal motion to continue the application until a date.
Term?
Well, not, right now, the date is, I believe, correctly, May the 4th. If the board wished to entertain another date between now and May the 4th, that would be one piece. If the absence of that would be a motion to continue the application until the May 4th at 7:00, or assume thereafter, as the matter may be hard, without further notice. I'll just throw it out there, just to help move things along for the public, and I mean that we have, and up to the board if they can make it, but the March 23rd business meeting, if that would, instead of having to go to May for the next one.
There is a potential issue with that. It's been brought to my attention that the March 23rd meeting, that this room may actually be undergoing a renovation.
So now we're going to get the mics.
However, my understanding that in the past, there has been board meetings conducted in the multipurpose room. I will defer to the planning board on what we would like to do. I do not know exactly if the March 23rd for sure is going to be the date for the renovation, but we were instructed by the CFO to put a hold on it, and that's come to my attention this evening.
And then I realize our CFO was in charge of buildings and grounds, but, okay. I mean, one of the things that, you know, that I understand with these things being prolonged, you know, my intent is to get through these this year. I think, Mr. Coys, if we can get this to, you know, use the multipurpose room in March, you know, I'm not a big fan of using, you know, the business meetings, because I know this, the board members here have given a lot of time in the past year to try to get these through, but it is disappointing, you know, when we don't have applicants and even, I'm not going to leave Mr. Ash out of it too, but the objectors to be prepared to for any cases in here, because we are trying to get through these, so.
Mr. Chairman, if there is a desire by the board to have this meeting on March the 23rd, I would also suggest that several conditions be put on, same, that no later than 3:00 on March, Friday, March the 10th, any and all plans that the applicant intends to provide when amendment be provided, the information that we asked for back in November, and I mean all the information relative to the tenant lease hours, type of business, et cetera, to allow the public and the professionals to review, be provided. If they don't intend to produce an amended plan by the 10th, then they're going forward with the application as it currently exists, and barring, and since I know that personally, barring death, Mr. Ford needs to be here on March the 23rd. It's not my favorite time of the year myself, but, you know. Or enough lead time that the board can make a decision as to where to go. Right now, we're in limbo.
All right, and the only other ask is, with the objector to, if still going to contest the jurisdiction, you know, the same timeline to provide evidence for that, otherwise, you know, it's going to remain here in the, at the planning board unless, Mr. Coys themes in a future date otherwise, but, you know, but if you want to make that case, we need to have that. We're not going to talk about it at the next meeting, you know, we want to have the material in front.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Grady, is the 23rd acceptable?
I'd have to check with all the other professionals.
Okay.
Because they're mostly not here.
So we'll book it for now, and otherwise, it's. By the way, if, if, Michael, that's a problem, we need to know at least 10 days in advance of the board, the website can be advised, everybody else can be advised, and notice can be placed. If the March 23rd meeting does not happen, this meeting will be held on May 5th, May 4th.
Without renotice.
Without renotice.
But the March date's with notice.
No, the March date without notice is a continuation. Mr. Ash is here on behalf of Hearthstone.
That's true.
Leaves in his jurisdiction to advise his client, and we'll put the actual notice everywhere else.
Okay.
The motion, I'm not allowed to make. I make a motion as to March 23rd, if possible, or it would be to May 4th, May 4th, without renotice. With all agreements to be placed, as Mr. Bernstein said. I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Scoboe, second. Comments from the dais? Roll call, please.
Mr. Peasen?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Radovich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mary LaPony?
Yes.
Harris Rock?
Yes. Okay. And with that, next item on the agenda is a motion for adjournment, unless Mr. Bernstein.
I would remind the public and the board that we do have a meeting next week. I believe we have an applicant for next week. I believe it's Homestead 279. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr.?
Uh, yeah, and, yeah.
Definitely Homestead 279, Bison may be another issue, but definitely Homestead. Definitely Homestead 279. Bison may be another issue, but definitely Homestead 279.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, the Mayor made the motion. Mr. Scovio seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourned.